I didn't get my steps.
We got, we got a vote last time and I'm really annoying. I don't have any idea why I did that. Can I change that? I don't remember what it was. I can't, I just totally.
He'll tell you what you wrote in there.
Okay.
Okay. Get what it was real quick in a minute.
Okay.
And you could ask to make that change.
Well, let me know if I can say no.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get started for the city councilman. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Julie.
Counselor Richards.
I'm here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Mayor Mahler.
Here.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Via teams here.
Let the record show we have seven present with no absent tonight's meeting. We're going to go on to consent agenda. But before we do on that, I'm going to move up an item. We have a nice young lady and I guess mom here this evening, Mailey Brewer. I can stand up just briefly. So everybody, welcome. It's a YAC appointment request. She would like to be on the youth advisor council. We're going to make one little change request. Instead of being an ex officio position for the city council, she would prefer to be a representation on our library board for the city. So thank you. That said, I'm moving that up to consent agenda for approval. With that said, I will move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, may we approve another YAC member? There were two.
Okay.
The second one is not, no, the second one is not present because she's in a soccer game today.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Her name is Bee Reeve and she would like to be an ex officio member to the health committee because she's interested in the whole of the situation.
Sounds good. With that amendment also, so Bee Reeve to ex officio member of the community health committee. With those two wanting to be on the YAC. That said, I'm moving up to consent agenda for a council directive.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yeah.
Counselor Richards.
Yeah.
Well, at the record show, we have seven eyes, no nays, approval of the both of them to the YAC. Welcome aboard. It's always a pleasure to have young youth being interested in our city and thank you very much. At this time, recognition of visitors and hearing the petitions. Anybody who'd like to come forth be heard before council. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
How you doing, Dave?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sir.
I will need one as well, please.
I'd like to read my comments into the record.
Sounds good.
On September 7th of this year, 2021, the city of Sweet Home approved resolution number 22 for proclaiming a quote state of emergency quote. The proclamation document states that further the city of Sweet Home recognizes individual choice related to masks and vaccine. We believe that citizens are fully capable of making the private individual healthcare and lifestyle decisions themselves. Our medical system is overwhelmed. People with non-COVID emergencies such as late-stage cancer, heart problems, strokes, et cetera, now do not have access to needed care because COVID cases from unvaccinated people are filling the hospitals. A recent article in Democrat Herald says that quote sizable new case flows with Lynn County population 129,672, not far behind Multnomah County with population of 812,825. The anti-mask movement is killing innocent people. The city must do whatever it can to stop this needless slaughter. I'm sorry that I even have to be here to talk about this today, but I see that we got, we have officials that are on the city council that are not wearing masks. I think you're setting a really poor example and you may be violating the law. So I have no further comments to make unless somebody asks questions of me.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to come forth be heard before council? Yeah.
What the man just said. It is a choice, as in the council wearing them or not wearing them. It's our freedom and our choice. And as far as it being a law, it is a mandate. And I know it's a different way to get a law, but the COVID cases that are in the hospitals that he's talking about, what a lot of people don't realize is they're calling them unvaccinated. If you've had one shot and you're in the hospital for COVID, they consider you unvaccinated. If you've had the second shot and it has not been 14 days since the second shot, you're considered unvaccinated. So these numbers that they're giving us are very incorrect. And I've heard this from surgeons and doctors, not just hearsay. They're saying, and their hospital's in Salem. The one surgeon I've talked to recently, he told me, yeah, our COVID unit's full. We have eight beds in our COVID unit. They're full. They are full. And he said they're all been at least one shot out of their eight that when I talked to him a month ago. So those numbers are skewed and that people don't understand that. So that is something that's a point that needs, everybody needs to understand and do their own research. What I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else who'd like to come heard before council? Good evening. Name and address for record.
Hi, Pam Darling, 39862 Misty Lane, Sweet Home, Oregon, 97386. I'm just going to read what I wrote. I would like to address the meeting that I attended last. I don't know the date of that. The meeting ended on a very sour note, which has really bothered me since then. You are a group of people that make up our city council, carrying differences and opinions. Therefore, there cannot be division and backbiting. If your team is going to accomplish anything, the display of anger from both individuals was very disturbing. We all have our differences, but as council members, it's important to uphold each other and to support each other. I do not know the exact circumstances or reasons for the outbursts of anger, but I do believe that a team divided cannot work together. Now more than ever, we cannot afford to be divided as council members and as a city of Sweet Home. Together we stand, divided we fall. I want to encourage each of us to work together for the good of the people. We need each other. We need each other. Let's not forget that we are a nation that was founded on the word of God, one nation under God. I encourage each of us to seek Him. I know none of us are perfect and I know things happen during, when you're in groups, but I know that left a very sour feeling in a lot of our stomachs. So I want to address that. I also do want to address that where I do stand on the mask. Obviously, I don't have one on. And I am greatly concerned that if we as individuals and as a group don't stand up against the mask mandate and also the jab, I really feel that we will be headed in the wrong direction. So I just want to encourage everybody to evaluate really where they stand and then make a stand on that and not making a stand on what others believe. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else who'd like to come before council be heard?
Mr. Mayor, there is a caller who has his hand raised.
Okay, go ahead. I will enter into testimony.
The caller whose number ends in 2490, you're able to unmute your mic.
Okay.
I don't see them.
All right. Anybody else who'd like to come forth be heard before council? Okay. Nothing on our old business. We're going to go on to new business. We're going to open up a public hearing at 6:45. The public hearing for zone map amendment application ZMA 21-03. And I will go ahead and open up the statement. Basically, I need to know from the councils if any ex parte or conflict of interest.
No.
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 Counselor Richards. Okay. At this time, we will go ahead and bring up the test. Is, okay. This wasn't on here, but that's fine. Any biased?
No.
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 Okay, we will move on to the testimony of the applicant.
Mayor, if I may, typically there's a staff report.
That's why I'm not staffed for, I'm sorry.
The applicant is represented here as well.
I'm going off of this and it's.
I see. So this application was reviewed by the Sweet Home Planning Commission at a public hearing on September 2nd. It's for a zone change. At that meeting, the planning commission approved the application and recommended that the city council approve it. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 62,291, 1.43 acres located in Sweet Home, Oregon, 97386. It's on 13S, 01E, 33A, tax lot 600. For, to translate that into something more understandable, it is a parcel of land that is located along Live Oak Street. It is between two dead ends of Live Oak. There's a eastern portion and a western portion of Live Oak, and this is the land in between those. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the low-density residential R1 zone to the medium-density residential zone R3. The proposed zone change would bring, would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. This application was filed simultaneously with a subdivision application, SD 21-02, and approval of that subdivision is pending the approval of this zone change. The planning commission approved that subdivision as well at their last meeting, but again, it's pending approval of this zone change. So the question before you is whether the zoning map should be changed to bring the property into conformance with the comprehensive plan map. And I believe the applicant is here and can give further testimony if you wish to hear.
Okay. Any questions, the counselors, at this time?
Your mics.
I see the map and I see.
Your, your mic's off.
I see the map and I see the building right in the way of Live Oak. Is that going away?
It will have to because the, that area, essentially that, that area will become a dedicated road. The extension of Live Oak from each.
Yeah, because we had this discussion before, many, many months ago.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all I need. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Blair, on the map, it shows the 46th Avenue dead ends into it, Manzanita dead ends into it. So will the access only be through Live Oak?
So the map, there is a discrepancy in the map in that the counties, there was a property line adjustment done on this, on these properties that was not recorded with the county yet, and so the maps were no, were not yet updated. And so there, there are now, in that shaded area, there are now just two parcels and the line goes along right in between them, perpendicular to where the property lines are now. And so it's only the southern portion of that property that is, that is being discussed tonight. The portions affected by Live Oak. The northern part of the property that is, that has access from Manzanita and 46th, that is a separate parcel that is not proposed to be subdivided at this time.
Thank you.
Blair, Manzanita is a dead-end street that I don't think it goes through anywhere else there.
No.
Is that not true?
At that location on the northern property, which again is not, is not being changed tonight, it does dead end and there's a reserve strip at the end of it. There, just for your information, the owner of that parcel wants to place a house on it. The, which is fine, is allowed in that zone. The, the, what the city is insisting upon is that that house be placed in a, in such a way that in, if in the future it's subdivided, Manzanita will still be able to continue through or to either have a cul-de-sac or to connect through to 46th.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, so access to the property is only through Live Oak, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody other questions?
Mr. Mayor, actually you can get to that property on 45th Street. Not easily.
The northern part you can.
Yes.
Yes. Not, not the southern portion that is being discussed tonight.
Counselor Sanchez, Richards, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
Maybe if I could point the council out and anybody who's online or out in the audience to page 33 of the packet. That's a better, that's a better map. So you can see with the black dots, you can actually see how the new property lines are, are addressed. And so there's a northern and a southern.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will move on to testimony, applicant's testimony. Good evening. Name and address for record, please.
Good evening. I am Hayden Wooton with Recent Associates. Our address is 321 First Avenue East, Suite 3A, Albany, Oregon, 97321. I'd like to start by thanking Blair for his staff report. I think he covered just about everything I was doing as well. I would just like to stress that this zone change is bringing the zone into conformance with its current comprehensive plan designation. And so then if there are any outstanding questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, counsel, have any questions of, of the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. At this time, I will have any testimony in favor, testimony of those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Okay. Testimony in opposition, testimony wishing to speak in opposition of the application. Neutral testimony, testimony that this is neither in favor nor in opposition of the application. This time I'll open up for rebuttal. No rebuttal. I will go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:54. At this time, open up for any discussion from the council, any additional information you present. Okay. Keep in mind, this will go down to ordinance bills below. Next up, request for council action, Woods Roadhouse PA permit application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This begins on page 40 of your packet, if you want to follow along. You have the application following on page 42.
Ray, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
We do need the application approved by the council. That would be during that, the ZMA application would be approved during this part of the, of the program and then the ordinance would be approved later.
Okay.
No, it's, it's not part of the public hear, I mean, you can close the public hearing and approve the.
Yeah, but it needs to be listed down here so I know to move it on to that.
Yes. Apologies.
So you need a request for council.
So the RCA, yeah, the RCA does request approval of the application and then we would do.
I'll go ahead and ask for directive of council regarding.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Well, second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Yeah.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yeah.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. At the record show, we have seven eyes, no nays, approval of the application. Thank you. Okay, now going back to the council directive of the Woods, Woods Roadhouse PA permit application.
So again, begins on page 40. The actual application follows shortly on page 42. Said Chief Flynn was hoping to be here. He's been caught up on a call to answer any questions he might have. Otherwise, it sits before you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do not have the application in my computer. I have two requests, but I don't have the application.
Oh, we fixed it after you pointed it out. So it's on there.
On my app? It's not on my computer. Sorry. I'll look at hers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So is there a termination date on this application?
There is not, is what I understand it. There is not a termination date, nor is there a termination, a set terminated time on any evening.
So basically, if we approve this permit, it's for eternity? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, come on up. Mr., go ahead. Name and address for record, please.
I know the joke. Teresa Brown, 27919 Rigsill Road, Foster, Oregon. So the reason I have this application is 10 years ago, when I bought my bar, the Woods Roadhouse, I had applied for a PA permit. We went through the council and they approved it perpetuity until there was an issue. The reason why then that they approved it, we had some people that were saying that they didn't want me to have music at the bar and everything. And the way that it, that it ended was that as long as there was no issues, as long as my decimal sound was less than the mil, that that was pretty appropriate because in our facility, we typically only have music on the weekends. We typically stop everything by 1 o'clock. There was never anything later than that. And it was ongoing. This last month and a half ago, now COVID hit, we shut down, we had to shut down at 10 o'clock. Month and a half ago, officers were called at 11 o'clock. And they came out and they told me that we were supposed to have a PA permit. And I said, we did have a PA permit and we've had it for a long time. No one could find it. Nowhere. With no date on it, nothing. So Jeff recommended that I refile it and bring it before you guys to get it reapproved. So we never had an end date on it and that's why I left it open as like the other one, to just have it go on as the other one was.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, that most applicants, you can't have a permanent PA permit because in case there's a problem. PA permit because in case there's a problem, it can be addressed at any given time. But I understand the circumstance in the past, that you had RV parks and people that were...
Yeah, recreational zone, and it was, part of the business is having entertainment, and part of the business is having your business. OLCC approves us to be open until 2:30 in the morning. We chose not to do that. So most of our noise, and that's what it is, it could be music, it could be whatever, will end at one o'clock. Now, majority of the time, our plans to have things in by 12:30. I mean, even New Year's, we typically have most of the crowd noise out by 12:30. But we did one just in case because we didn't want people calling and, you know, complaining, and it not be appropriate. So when we've done DB tests, and I have a DB measurement, calibrator on my phone, we're way under the limit of what they had for 1,000 feet. So like I said, we did all the analysis, and we are very responsible about our music. We, you can go out to the woods pretty much anytime you want, and we're not going to have, we have our bands where they face the lake, not any of the residents or anything. Most of the people that live around there, I, I haven't had anybody have a problem except one person. But everyone that does live there, or even in the RVs and the trailer parks, they haven't told me any issues. We haven't noted. Jeff's never come out and said we had issues, so.
I don't recall any issues personally, but I, I mean, you understand my point is that if I allow, I mean, I'm just letting the council know, allow one tavern with a permanent PA, and that sets the precedence for all the taverns to be able to have a permanent PA. I think that's why Counsel Gerson had the question is why I was supposed...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any questions at councilors?
Mr. Mayor, did I understand you to say that you were going to have it year round? Because this thing says at the end of the year.
Yeah, it's year round.
Okay, but it says, the intent of this permit is to run through the end of the year.
No, I didn't put that on there.
It's on the, it's on the, on the first option.
The per, there was two permits. One was just a temporary one, and then the other one was the permanent one.
Okay. All right. I don't have a problem with this one.
I don't either. And I, I see where it says 1:00 AM on the handwritten permit. Because you're way out there beyond the mill, out there by the lake.
Yeah, we're right by that.
And so I think if there was any business that was going to be able to do something like this, it would definitely be out there. And so their situation, because of the proximity to high density populations in town, is completely different. And so I have no problem with this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and I think if I'm not mistaken, the point did this for a summer or something or something.
Yeah, they typically did theirs for this. And he's quit. Yeah, Mike quit doing that, and he's turning.
I don't have a problem. I just was clarifying the question as to why she brought that up.
Yeah, I understand. Makes sense.
Do you have any other questions, Counsel Gerson?
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I had been out there when there was live music, and I, it wasn't very loud. It seemed all good, but I don't have any problem approving this at all.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you for coming this evening to clarify some things.
Okay.
So at this time, just need a directive of council.
So moved as recommended.
Motion second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Gerson?
Aye.
Counsel Trask?
Aye.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye. Let the record show, seven ayes, no nays, approval of the PA permit. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I real quick?
Probably next time.
For clarification. So the motion was to approve as recommended. I just want to clarify for the council, the recommendation was that it would be until 1:00 AM, but in the staff recommendation, it does not mention an end date. But it says option number one, and if you look at option number one, that is where it does say until the end of the year.
Yeah.
So I guess we probably need to clarify the motion of, do we want to allow it in perpetuity, or do you want to allow it through, through the end of the year as, as listed here? Do you want to make it an annual event? How, how does the council want to?
Well, I don't know how the rest of the council feel, but I felt in perpetuity, that if there's a problem, we could readdress it then, you know?
I had no problem with that either.
That's okay with me.
Yeah, no problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to the first reading of ordinance bill number seven for 2021. Any councils who are active, they want to move it forward for first reading?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second for ordinance bill number seven, 2021, ZMA 21-03, to be first read this evening. By roll call, please.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counsel Gerson?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes, no nays, approval of the first reading of ordinance bill number seven for 2021, ZMA 21 dash 03. Do you want to go ahead and read the ordinance bill?
Ordinance Bill Number Seven for 2021, ordinance number blank. An ordinance amending the official zoning map. Whereas, the applicant, Cadwell Realty Group care of Jason Cadwell, submitted zone change application ZMA 21 dash 03 and requested a zone map change for an area consisting of approximately 62,291 square feet, 1.43 acres located in Sweet Home, Oregon 9738613S01E33ATAXLOT600. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the low-density residential, R1, zone to the medium-density residential, R3, zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. And whereas, the Planning Commission of the City of Sweet Home held a public hearing on September 2nd, 2021, with due notice of such public hearing having been given and provided an opportunity for public comments and testimony. The Planning Commission deliberated at their September 2nd, 2021, meeting, and recommended that the city council approve this application. And whereas, the city council held a public hearing on this matter on September 14th, 2021, with due notice of such public hearing. To provide opportunity for public comment and testimony, the city council approved this application by motion at their September 14th, 2021, meeting. And whereas, the proposed medium-density residential, R3, zoning is needed to facilitate development of the subject property. Now, therefore, the City of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section 1, the City of Sweet Home adopts the findings of fact in support of zone change application ZMA 21 dash 03 included as Exhibit A. Section 2, the City of Sweet Home amends the official zoning map identified in SHMC 1720020 as the city's zoning map, including all subsequent amendments. For the area consisting of approximately 62,291 square feet, 1.43 acres located in Sweet Home, Oregon 9738613S01E33ATAXLOT600. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the low-density residential, R1, zone to the medium-density residential, R3, zone, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of blank 2021.
Any questions of council? Need council directive to move it forward?
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counsel Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
Let the record show, seven ayes, no nays, move it forward for second reading on September 28th meeting by title only. We don't have any second or third readings. Moving on to reports of committee, any reports committee members.
Mr. Mayor, the, the YAC will have two new members for the council next meeting. So I'm really excited that we're going to get this off the ground. And also I have a Chamber of Commerce meeting on Thursday.
Very good. Any other meeting notes? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counsel Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I finally get to attend another council of government meeting on the 16th. They've been canceled a couple times, so I'll be happy to report back next meeting when I learn.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on now to mayor's report, a few things. Reminder, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the council training at McMinnville should be a good training session. I met with our school board superintendent, seemed like a nice lady. She, we had a good lengthy conversation. One thing that I did come out of it was that we've had kind of a difference of not really having a council and a representation of our school board coming together to discuss the issues, to see how we can collaborate and work as a partner in the past years. She's agreed to, to do that and to move it forward. So we are going to commit, have a committee of three from the council, and she's going to come up with a committee where hopefully maybe once a quarter, get together and, and talk about a lot of the issues within the school and collaborate, see what we can do to kind of partner up. So that said, I've talked to Counsel Gorley, and Counsel, Counsel Gerson, and myself, the three of us, we will be setting up meetings with our new school superintendent and having some discussions. Hopefully some good positive things will come out of it. Last week, on Friday, I, I attended a Ridgeway Medical Facility opening, and that was very good. We've been found they're a little bit behind on their opening, but it was pretty good. I think they've got a lot of positive things they're going to bring to the committee, especially from medical services. A lot of positive things coming in the future with them. That was about all I had to report. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be out Monday, Tuesday next week. And again, this weekend, the training will need to be in McMinnville at four o'clock. So the training will start at four o'clock Friday. We will get you all of the information and addresses in the next day or two.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Department directors' reports. Anybody have questions of our directors?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Blair, if you would, on the last statement on your report about the work on the mill property, do we know where we're going to go on that?
It really depends on the county.
Yeah.
My understanding, the last verbal indication I heard from them was that I wanted to look at dividing, dividing up the property into parcels based on which parts of the property had received the no further action designation by DEQ, so that they had clean pieces of property to sell that didn't have any, any barriers really. I'm a little concerned with that because the, the parcels, the way those lines were drawn out for the purposes of the cleanup, make for some pretty odd parcel lines, and I'm not sure how effective that will really be. But that, that's the last indication we had from the county was that that is what they wanted to do, but we will continue to urge them to plan long-term with how the property is divided up. And we're optimistic that we'll get some good news on cleanup, and they can have all of it, you know, free and clear.
I'd kind of like to add to that because I was a little disappointed in our meeting, and I, I'm concerned about their decision because we had three county commissioners at odds with each other. And that, that was my opinion of how I took the meeting. I think Sherri Springer was dead on to what our community is needing and what we were looking for. We have the last say on the zoning, and the county commissioners are not listening to what we say. We'd like to see that zoned, and they still are not listening. And I, and I'm a little concerned that, that they need to listen to what we like for our community. They don't, they shouldn't be dictating what we do for our community. We should have a say what we do in our community. I was a little concerned with one county commissioner, in my opinion, he's looking at all the dollar signs instead of what's best for our community. Another county commissioner was looking at affordable housing, minority housing, a lot of things I don't necessarily think that it was for what we're looking for, based on discussions we've had with our economic development direction we're going and a lot of things we're trying to get accomplished. So I think that we need to have future conversations with our county commissioners, and hopefully we can come up with a solution that works best for all. I'm a little, little bit disappointed because I think that their decision last week kind of set us back, and it was not a positive thing to set us back. And I think it set us back about two years with their decision. So hopefully we can have some future conversations that we can expedite this moving forward. So, and I, I may be out of line by my statement here, but I just figured that's the way I took that meeting, and it was a little concerning with their decision. So, anyway.
So, Mr. Mayor, is it possible for you or Ray to set up a meeting with the county commissioners and the council?
We've had that conversation before, and it's, hopefully we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the, of the directors? Anything the directors would like to bring up? City attorney? Okay. Nothing else to say. Okay, council business, good order. Anything need to be brought up?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address the comment from the lady in there. I, I apologize to the council for that action. And I'm sincere in that. I didn't handle that very well. Okay, so I wanted to let you know that I, I regret doing that at that level. So, anyway, thanks for coming and talking. I appreciate it, and, and thanks.
So, Mr. Mayor, so I gave everyone an invitation to the council concert on Monday night. This is a free concert sponsored by the Rotary and, and Showcase, and we're very excited to have Dr. Hall with us. I think it'll be a really special evening for you, so I hope everyone comes.
I've had many of opportunities to listen to this young lady perform, and she's phenomenal. Actually, it's Dr. Walthee's daughter. And like I say, she's phenomenal. So I recommend it's people to come. Anything else? Council business, good order? If not, we will adjourn at 7:17.